Hello, welcome to our afternoon debate between Castlemain and Burundara. Welcome to our lovely President Alex, who's a member of Task Force, but they are going to be stepping in today to be facilitating this debate. Alex, are you ready to begin?
Very much ready.
All right, may proceed.
I call on the sponsor of the bill.
President, the Honourable Member Lynzart, I move to introduce a bill for an act relating to the establishment of gender-neutral public bathrooms, oh, sorry, gender-neutral public bathrooms.
The question is that the bill now be read a first time. All of that opinion say aye, to the contrary, no. Think the ayes have it. Off you go, Honourable Member.
President, the Honourable Member Lynzart, I move that the bill now be read a second time. Is that what I do? Sorry.
Yeah, you're all good to start your sponsor's speech.
Fantastic. This speech will discuss sexual assault and mental illness and may be challenging or triggering for some people. If they feel concerned about the content, youth parliamentarians and members of the gallery are encouraged to step out or mute their volume and return in a few minutes' time. Our country's greatest value is the old Australian idea of a fair go. Here, everyone gets a go. There are no barriers for people in this country if they are just willing to give their best. This idea is an insidious, well-constructed illusion. How can we claim to be fair when we ignore whole demographics of our very own citizens? How can Victoria, a state that prides itself on education, have been so willfully ignorant to the needs of the people within it? May we please imagine for a moment a non-binary student attending high school. This student asks their teacher to use the bathroom, walks across the hall and is met with three choices: a male, a female or an accessible bathroom. I hope that we can all understand the strain under which this would place a student, the unnecessary pain that is caused by them simply not being given an option that represents them. Please understand that this is not an imagined scenario. This is an ordeal that I have witnessed gender non-conforming friends suffer through every day. It's not just at school. Through the entire state of Victoria, our bathrooms are constructed according to a building code based on an antiquated idea of binary gender. The most basic of needs is denied to those who do not fit within these narrow confines. This bill provides an action to remedy this dire situation. We must make all bathrooms in Victoria gender-neutral. Everyone, everywhere, has a right to access the service that they need. Public bathrooms are essential for all people. All people should feel safe using public bathrooms. The rate of sexual abuse for gender-diverse Australians is four times that of the rest of the population. These bathrooms will create a space in which gender non-conforming Victorians know that they are welcome and will prevent the abuse that they may be subject to in gendered bathrooms. Visibly gender non-conforming people are some of the most at-risk individuals in our society. We must create a space that these people can know is for them. We must not continue to marginalise and ignore their needs. The establishment of gender-neutral bathrooms across Victoria would be hugely beneficial for gender non-conforming Victorians. There is immense value in communicating to all citizens that the government sees them, values them and wants to make their life easier. It is possible to initiate this change incredibly simply, with minimal negative impact on businesses and establishments. The establishment of genderless bathrooms will be inexpensive. There will be no destruction of current infrastructure. It will be well-established for the public and education will be provided as to why this action is so important. By making all bathrooms gender-neutral, this bill will simply, quickly and effectively address this gap in legislation, allowing all people access to a most essential service with the urgency and wide-ranging effect necessary to remedy this huge issue in a meaningful and lasting way. This could have a huge impact on a young gender non-conforming person. Gender-diverse youth have been shown to suffer from mental illness at a much higher rate than cisgender youth. This is largely because the society in which we live does not account for their needs. We must begin to. Beyond all the cultural implications, this bill is merely filling a gaping hole in our society and providing an essential service that has been hitherto neglected. This is a necessary action. There is no denying that all people need bathrooms. This need does not discriminate and neither should this parliament. Not only will this bill create a safe space for gender non-conforming people, but it will also break the boundaries of binary gender to create a more inclusive world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honourable Member. I call on the main refuter.
President, the Honourable Member Lynch, I would like to begin by just mentioning that this speech will briefly discuss transphobia and may be challenging or triggering for some people. If they feel concerned about the content, youth parliamentarians and the members of the gallery are encouraged to step out or mute their volume and return in a few minutes' time. So, in refuting this bill, the refuters would like to express that we are broadly supportive of what is being put forward. But do have some concerns with the specific implementation of the bill, which ultimately should be considered before the bill goes further. I would like to put forward two significant concerns to kick this off. Clause five of this bill explains that at least 50% of cubicles would have sanitary disposal units. Of course, this means that some bathrooms will have 100% sanitary disposal units, but a large majority will likely have less. As such, we could not help but think that this may be problematic for some folks who identify as trans and/or gender diverse and may be faced with the situation where they may need to go to a cubicle that has a sanitary disposal unit and would have to wait for one to come available when, say, another cubicle that wouldn't have a sanitary disposal unit is. This could in some situations unfortunately lead to harassment or otherwise make this person feel uncomfortable and unsafe. To explain this better, say a person who needs access to a sanitary disposal unit may be waiting in a long line at a bathroom facility and a cubicle comes available that does not have one and they consequently don't use it. This might lead to a stranger questioning them to why they aren't using that cubicle and may make the person seeking a sanitary disposal unit uncomfortable. Or could unfortunately lead to harassment. This is not at all to say that gender-neutral bathrooms should not be implemented. They should be, but rather recognise the significant safety concerns in regards to the sanitary disposal unit requirements in this bill. And we call for the bathrooms to have a 100% sanitary disposal unit requirement rather than at least 50%. Secondly, if we refer to clause four, we can see that there is no mention of the use of braille with the bathroom signage. This is an issue of accessibility, as some people need braille as it can help them independently navigate their surroundings, which should be a basic requirement of any public facility. Aside from this, I would like to expand the rest of our arguments. Our second speaker, the Honourable Member Von Muller, will outline concerns surrounding the effectiveness of advertising suggested in the bill. As per clause seven, from there, our third speaker, the Honourable Member McRae, will propose an alternative solution which would involve creating gender-neutral bathrooms, with an exception of some gendered bathrooms in certain circumstances. Then our fourth speaker, the Honourable Member Chesla, will move to speak about how VBA inspections are overly onerous and do not reflect current practices. Our fifth speaker, the Honourable Member Gray, will discuss how the VBA would not know where to conduct inspections. And lastly, our sixth speaker, the Honourable Member Bethune, will talk about how the ban on gendered advertising is problematic. That's all. Thank you.
Whoops. Thank you very much, Honourable Member Lynch. I now call on the Honourable Member Lawwell.
President, the Honourable Member Lawwell, I'd like to address the fact that Honourable Member Lynch raised that we did not include braille in our bill, any mention of it. That's because in the research phase of writing the bill, we discovered that there were already legal requirements around including braille on the signage outside bathrooms and as such, we didn't need to include it in the bill. In addition, I'd like to say that the specific actions that must be taken to implement these gender-neutral public bathrooms are incredibly simple and inexpensive. Bill doesn't demand any changes to existing facilities beyond those of the signage. Everything else will remain the same. Bathrooms must only have their signs changed to depict the facilities within them, as described in clause four of the bill. This will effectively neutralise gender within bathrooms at minimal inconvenience to the public. There will be no destruction of Victoria's existing toilets or building of new ones. The changes can be made at little cost to businesses and the government. There is also a whole year in which organisations can implement this change. The bill will commence a full year after receiving a sent from the Youth Governor of Victoria. This allows plenty of time for bathrooms to be de-gendered by the relevant parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Honourable Member Lawwell. I now call upon the Honourable Member Von Muller.
Thank you, President. The Honourable Member Von Muller. I firstly would like to reinforce what the Honourable Member Lynch said before me in that we are broadly supportive of what is being put forward. However, we do have significant concerns in the way of implementation in which this bill is being proposed. One of these concerns that I will talk about, this bill is in clause one D and clause seven. While we agree that some form of advertising needs to be done, we however fear that it won't have enough effect and would end up costing the government and the people of Victoria more than it needs to. In the past, Victoria has been accused of spending too much on advertising, such as the $3.2 million Moving Victoria East Westlink campaign blitz, which was ended up axed and the campaign was a waste of money. Or federally, the Department of Health $6 million ad blitz, which aimed at improving physical activity in young women, which didn't have any effect and essentially was disregarded to be a thing. We would hate to see this end up as another example of a large waste of money on an advertising campaign that would ultimately end up unnoticed. If the opposition truly wants to implement this bill, then maybe we need to look across to the US and specifically Washington DC. In 2014, the District of Columbia's Office of Human Rights launched a new Safe Bathrooms DC campaign, which virtually cost both the government and the people of Washington almost nothing. At the time, it had made it so the all single occupancy in public places or restaurants, businesses etc to be gender-neutral bathrooms. All their campaign did was made it so that was to encourage people to report bathrooms that didn't comply by tweeting with the hashtag Safe Bathrooms DC. And while we don't think that reporting would be the first step, it would still be a cheaper option to run a purely run purely a social media campaign and most likely a more successful option in the long run, as word of mouth is much stronger than just an advertising blitz. I highly encourage the opposition to reconsider their implementation strategies. Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution. I now call upon the Honourable Member Grave.
President, the Honourable Member Grave, I would like to follow on from what Honourable Member Lawwell was outlining about the practicality of this bill's solution by highlighting the convenience of the signage system. The signage will reflect the facilities available within the bathroom and individual cubicles. For example, if a bathroom contains a toilet, the sign for the bathroom will include an image of the toilet, under-set by the word toilet. In addition to this, the signage will explicitly indicate the facilities available within the bathroom, including sanitary bins, urinals, baby-changing areas, showers and accessible bathrooms. This will make it easier for the public to locate, access and use the facilities that they need. In many ways, this is more effective than the existing system, in which not all bathrooms have signposted facilities and people do not always have access to the necessary amenities. Clause five mandates that sanitary bins must be provided in 50% of cubicles in a bathroom, meaning that if a public space has two bathrooms, the proprietor of the space must provide sanitary bins in 50% of the cubicles. This is a measure to help prevent proprietors of public bathrooms from attempting to maintain gendered spaces by restricting facilities to one of their bathrooms. Preventing such loopholes in the legislation was of major concern in the writing of this bill to ensure that its positive impacts are permanent and widespread. Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution. I would like to call upon the Honourable Member McRae.
President, Honourable Member McRae, although we're giving this bill a superficial reading, it may seem like a great initiative and at its core, the aims are, in the real world, its implementation raises other concerns and contains significant flaws. One of these issues is how it ignores other groups of people which are negatively affected by gender non-denoting bathrooms. For example, as far as I can tell, it centers an incredibly Western experience with little regard for the women in the Muslim community who require single-sex bathrooms to adjust their hijabs or other chosen religious veils if they wear one. Not to mention places such as the beach or pools, which also have no exemption in this bill. This issue with unisex bathrooms was highlighted in 2019 at a popular Sunshine Coast beach, where a Muslim family could not use the public bathrooms to change because there were no female-only showers they could use. In response, a spokesperson for the Muslim organisation Sunshine Coast stated that with a growing Muslim population, it would be appropriate for the government to take into account the needs of its citizens and take input before building such facilities to ensure that it can easily cater to all. And this bill doesn't. By making all bathrooms gender-neutral, these women will be further marginalised and this, in my eyes, is unacceptable, as it should be to all members. However, there is a clear solution to this. Why not create or reassign some bathrooms to gender-neutral whilst still leaving some denoting gender, so they can be inclusive of everyone? The legislation should ensure that everyone has a bathroom they are comfortable in, but this bill does not achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution. I now call upon the Honourable Member, just, sorry. I'm sorry, bad at last names, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, President. The Honourable Member Trishin Ski. The bill for the establishment of gender-neutral public bathrooms is one that will move Victoria to be a more inclusive and accepting place. As mentioned before by the Honourable Member Lynzart, gendered bathrooms create unnecessary unease for gender diverse people. Currently, public bathrooms do little to affirm non-cisgender identities as they are isolating and uncomfortable for non-binary and gender non-conforming people and make transgender people feel pressured to appear passing unnecessarily. Additionally, trans men who menstruate are not provided with adequate means to dispose of sanitary items within their current gender segregation. The impacts of this bill go beyond making bathroom spaces that are not daunting for the average gender diverse person. Currently, in most places, the only gender-neutral option for bathrooms is the accessible bathroom. This is not good enough. Those bathrooms should be reserved for people with disabilities but are often occupied by gender non-conforming people to avoid that stress of choosing a bathroom that does not align with their gender identity. The unease of entering a public bathroom which does not affirm a person's gender identity should be felt by no one, including cis people. However, the current system creates scenarios where the "this ultimatum" is present. For example, baby-changing areas are often only found in women's bathrooms, leaving a single father in the awkward position of entering a space not signed for him. This is not necessary. There is nothing gendered about being a parent and we should not act as though it is only cis women who are changing nappies in 2021. Removing gender from our public bathrooms should not leave, would not leave a father in this position. This bill will make the public bathroom experience more inclusive, effective and convenient for not only gender non-conforming people but all Victorians.
Thank you for your contribution. I would now like to call upon the Honourable Member Chesla.
President, the Honourable Member Chesla, I want to echo what my colleagues have contributed. This bill has its strengths, but it is hindered by several details. I want to dive into a specific yet important aspect, the inspection of bathrooms by the Victorian Building Authority, or VBA. For those unfamiliar, the VBA is responsible for regulating buildings and plumbing in Victoria. They run a proactive inspections programme, which inspects new building works to ensure they follow regulations. They inspect 10% of all building permits in Victoria per year, chosen through a mix of risk and randomness. Contrast the VBA's current approach with what the bill is proposing. Under clause 8.1, the VBA would need to conduct inspections of every affected bathroom facility annually. Every public bathroom, every year. This would require a massive scaling up of resources, funding, employees and expertise, all by commencement in 12 months. However, the key flaw with this clause is that it misunderstands the purpose of building inspections. They're not to punish, they're to deter. The VBA is effective because it inspects the worst offenders to deter others. The threat of a stick can be just as powerful and a lot less resource-intensive than an actual stick. Mandating annual inspections of every public bathroom is onerous, inefficient and just not how the VBA works best. We suggest the opposition reconsider the inspection process. Maybe only 10% of bathrooms could be inspected. Maybe we could develop a registration process with modifications where gender-neutral bathrooms are self-uploaded with evidence, so they don't need to be inspected. Regardless, mandatory annual inspections are the wrong approach to putting this policy into practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Honourable Member. I now call upon the Honourable Member Duff.
Thank you, President. The Honourable Member Duff. I would like to inform the opposition on the implementation, which was just touched upon, of the penalty system laid out by our bill. In our eighth clause, we establish the following: an annual inspection conducted by the VBA. Personnel conducting the inspection must assess compliance by determining whether a public bathroom uses correct gender-neutral signage as defined in clause three, that it satisfies sanitary disposal unit quotas and that it is without gendered signage. The government has concluded that it is under the discretion of an inspector. Initially, a non-compliant public space or entity will be sent a warning message that should prompt the public space or entity to comply with signage, quotas and advertising rules. And after a 30-day period, if the public space does not change their bathrooms to meet standards, they'll receive a fine. Because one of the risks of the over-fining or under-fining that may be occurred under an inflexible one-size-fits-all penalty, the bill proposes a scaled penalty system, a level 10 fine of 10 penalty units per bathroom sign that is not gender-neutral or that does not satisfy the bill's fourth to seventh clauses in another way. Thank you. Oh, I've still got quite a bit of time.
Thank you for your contribution. I now call upon the Honourable Member Gray.
President, the Honourable Member Gray speaking. I have a question for this chamber. How many bathroom facilities need to be modified under the opposition's bill? 10,000? 20,000? 50,000? I don't know. Not only do I not know, but the state government also does not know. There is no handy database of every building in Victoria grouped by building classification and number of bathrooms. Under clause eight, all modified bathrooms need to be inspected by the Victorian Building Authority annually. As the Honourable Member Chesla indicated, the VBA does not have the resources to inspect every bathroom and universal inspections aren't effective aren't an effective way of ensuring compliance anyway. However, there's an even bigger problem. If we don't know what bathrooms need to be inspected, how can they be inspected? Imagine, you're a building inspector. This bill passes and you suddenly have to ensure all public bathrooms are gender-neutral. Great, but how? Building inspectors usually know what properties to inspect through building permits. Sorry. Changing the signs in a bathroom probably doesn't require a building permit. How will you know whether the local kebab shop has a bathroom to inspect? This needs to be reviewed before it can be successfully implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Honourable Member. I now call upon the Honourable Member Griffiths.
President, the Honourable Member Griffiths. The rate of sexual abuse towards gender-diverse Australians is four times higher than that of the rest of the population. The abuse which these Australians face is unacceptable. Large-scale social change is necessary to lower the rates at which gender-diverse people face this violence. The establishment of gender-neutral bathrooms across Victoria will play a vital role in combating sexual assault and harassment towards trans and gender-diverse people. As well as wide-ranging changes that will follow the implementation of gender-neutral bathrooms, this bill includes a comprehensive plan to educate and inform Victorians. The education campaign proposed through our bill will reach all Victorians, informing them of the new gender-neutral bathrooms and the manner in which they are to conduct themselves in these spaces. This will play a key role in the prevention of assault and harassment when these bathrooms are implemented. Numerous reports have found that education is the best way of normalising and destigmatizing the LGBTQ+ community. For many, concern may arise regarding the elimination of male and female bathroom spaces. There is no denying that many women feel safer in exclusively female spaces. However, there still remains immense value in providing a space for everyone to coexist and to begin to understand each other better through proximity. Ultimately, this space and this education will lower rates of sexual assault and harassment by breaking down barriers between all genders. Creating a space in which everyone is welcome and no one feels the pressures of the traditional gender binary will allow for people, no matter how they identify, to feel safe in their gender expression. Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution. I now call upon the Honourable Member Bethune.
President, the Honourable Member Bethune. One part of this bill that might go unnoticed is the ban of advertisement targeted towards a specific gender as per clause 4.3. We understand that this proposal tries to eliminate any signage that suggests a gendered bathroom. However, there has been very little thought regards to advertising of other kinds other kinds of advertising in the creation of this bill. Firstly, what do advertisements targeted towards a specific gender look like? We can probably imagine obvious examples, like an ad saying, "Hey ladies, buy this product." However, most advertising targets gender more um, I, sorry, more subtly. But this bill bans ads that don't mention gender, but feature stereotypical imagery like motorbikes, meat and muscle cars. Is a gender stereotype sure? But the clear intention of the ad would also be to appeal to men. Will these forms of advertisements be banned also? Gendered advertising is certainly problematic, but the proposed solutions from the opposition is also going to cause major issues.
Thank you for your contribution. The floor is now open to debate. Is there anyone from the opposition who would like to speak? Remember, if there's no speakers, the debate does end, but I'll give you a bit more time. The Honourable Member, hang on, you've already spoken. Somebody who preferably hasn't already spoken. Uh, somebody who preferably hasn't already spoken from the opposition. Uh, the Honourable Member Billings.
President, the Honourable Member Billings. The government understands the clearly well-intended arguments of the opposition. However, we find it contradictory that they are promoting the idea of comfort for all, which I understand, I'm an LGBT person. Um, however, we find it contradictory that they're not considering comfort for other minorities or who might be affected by degendering bathrooms such as women who don't feel comfortable in shared bathrooms or Muslim women who need the spaces for their own religious practices. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Um, sweet, is there anybody from the opposition that would like to speak? Anybody from the opposition? Uh, the Honourable Member Cruz, you wanting to speak? Last reminder that if no one comes up with their hand from the opposition, uh, I will have to end the debate. I'll give you one last chance. Um, okay then. Uh, the time for debate has expired and I call on the sponsor of the bill for their right of reply.
Um, President, the Honourable Member Lindsay. Um, I would like to respond to a number of the refutations that were brought up by the opposition. Um, uh, to reiterate, braille is already a legal requirement, so we did not feel it necessary to place that into the bill. Um, sanitary facilities were required in this way to, um, acknowledge the needs of small businesses that may be struggling with changing this, um, and to keep the expense down for them. Um, they're already signposted. I find, I think that, um, this will create enough space for people to access the bathrooms in a timely manner. Um, in response to your quest queries about the education campaign, um, this campaign is essential to the bill and I don't think that it is necessary to change it because it is something that many people are not aware of. Um, it will not be easily understood by a lot of members of the public, because I don't think many people actually think about this. However, um, it's necessary to, um, do a really wide-reaching campaign and a social media campaign will not achieve what we want this to achieve because it should be aimed at older Australians who are less acquainted with the concept of, like, with gender diverse people and should be given the opportunity to understand it. Um, ah, the locations of public bathrooms are widely available across the internet. I find it hard to believe that the Building Authority of Victoria will struggle to find where they come from. I don't think that that is a matter that is really, um, relevant to be raised. I think that that is something that is just really widely available information. Um, when talking about gendered advertising, um, we thought specifically, some of you may be familiar with this, but you know the tampon machine in the Southern Cross women's bathroom? That was the vision of, um, that was the vision of gendered advertising. We didn't want, this was.
The, uh, member, the Honourable Member's time has expired.
Sorry?
The Honourable Member's time has expired.
Thank you.
Um, the question now is that the, the Establishment of Gender Neutral Public Bathrooms Bill be read a second and a third time? All that, all those of that opinion say aye to the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Excellent, well done. Uh, Hom speaking here. Uh, great debate, everyone. Uh, well done. Great work. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. We